We call the meeting to order at 7:01. And may we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Pat, could you please lead us?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Liz, can we please have a roll call though?
Bryce?
Here.
Botsu?
Here.
Ashman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Robinson? And he's absent with notice. And Skornica?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four will be the approval of our agenda.
I have a, I'd like to, on the agenda, I'd like item 11C. I'd like to table that until we have a full council present. That's for the pro tempore appointment. And I think we've got, Tanya, some time on that. It's close to this.
It is the closest meeting to the November 20th date, is what that is.
Or thereafter, right?
The closest meeting to the November 20th. It can't be before, obviously. It can be after. This is our closest meeting. So it's up to you. Doesn't make a difference.
Could we table that until next month?
We can do that.
That way we'll have a full.
So we want to put that on new business for December? Any discussion, questions on that one? Concerns?
We have to have it supported before we can discuss it.
To simply suggest a table, it's not a motion. I'm just saying, is there any other issues with it?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the amended agenda.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, can we, Liz, will you read me back again, the motion, the support? I think I flipped them.
Motion by Hayden, supported by Botsu, to amend the agenda to table pro tempore appointment.
Thank you. Yep, I flipped them. All right. And next, we're looking for the approval of the minutes from the September 28th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Skornica. Any further discussion? Questions?
I do have a question. Should we start putting this under acceptance items or consent agenda?
That would be fabulous. I thought, we kind of just discussed it, but I don't think we ever made a decision. Do we have discussion on that?
Where's it in our rules of procedure?
I think consent agenda would be more appropriate.
Right now, it's separate as item number five.
Because it can always be removed from the consent agenda if we want to.
Correct.
Amend it or something.
And pull it out of the consent agenda.
Acceptance just means, hey, we're receiving it, as opposed to consent agendas, like, basically, okay, we consent on all these items en masse. So I think that probably would be more appropriate.
Or we could leave it as is. It's up to the council.
Just leave it as is, I guess.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything?
I'd be okay with on a consent agenda either way.
I'm hearing two people.
No, I think it allows, leaving it where it is, allows us to be able to review it and amend without having to pull, because there are a lot of times, many cases, where we have to amend the minutes, right?
Sure.
So it makes sense to leave it separate. Otherwise, we'll go back and forth with it.
For sure. Okay.
Unless there's consistency where we don't have to amend it. I mean.
Just keep it in the back of our minds again.
Otherwise, I know it requires change of rules up to our rules of procedure as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. We will move on to six, which is our acceptance items. And for November, we have the Treasurers' Report, the Building Department Report, ordinance Violation Report, and the Board Minutes from the Ortonville DDA and the Brandon Township Board Minutes. Planning Commission did not meet in November.
So I do have a question in the ordinance violation tracking sheet. And I know it's pretty colorful, but I'm normally used to a red, yellow, green.
Yep.
So if it's red, they're in violation. If it's yellow, there's action being taken. And if there's green, it's complete. That's how I look at it. When you have green here, it looks like it should be complete, when really, green is just actions are being taken, but it's not completed.
Okay.
My thoughts, I'm just.
I don't have a preference on the colors. I mean, with the legend, I mean.
But wouldn't green suggest that it's complete? Well, we do have a separate section for completed items, though, so.
The only thing is here, though, because we have.
There weren't any in this month's report. What color is that? That's the bottom section.
That's just received, resolved violation, resolved, but there's just nothing.
All right, that's fine.
So can we simply switch the red for the green? Is that what you're saying? So make those red and make this green? The bar green?
Red, yellow, green.
What's the pale blue represent?
We just need to change our classifications, our categories.
Pale blue is new.
It's still violation.
Yes.
It's a new violation.
Yes.
Violation, violation.
So you like red for that?
Pink, red.
If it's, if it's new, and there's no, I mean, if it's a red, it's a violation. Yellow means there's action being taken, and we got movement, and yellow. And then green would be complete.
What about pink?
What would you like pink for?
I don't know. Shouldn't it stay pink for red? No, that's fine.
I don't care.
I just asked.
I don't care.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there for consideration, not, just comment. We don't act on it, just, when I review it, I look at green, oh, green's done. Then I look at the comments, like, oh, there's actions being taken, but it's not done yet. No, that's why.
Easily identified from a triad perspective. My question on it, well, I guess, let's resolve that first.
Is that a problem, to switch the red with the green? And then leave every other color in the key?
Yeah, whatever you want.
All right. Anybody else have a problem with that? Is that good? Is that bad?
It's fine.
All right. Well, let's just switch red and green and leave the others as is. Can we do that?
Wait, wait. Switch for red and green? Green would be. Right now, resolved violations are red. Oh, okay, okay. You mean that, that, yeah.
So if it's green, that means it's resolved.
There's a big green, and I see it being red.
Red means it's a new one. Alert.
I can do whatever you want.
Can you use a number two pencil?
No.
Blacking?
Sharpie?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, wait, okay.
Does somebody have a question? Yeah, I have several of these. I guess, I mean, there's, come from September. They're two months old, and nothing's been done on them. One from July 19th, nothing's been done since July 19th.
What number is that?
One.
Number one. The letter given to R. Sutton regarding the gate, that's July.
For the masons, yeah.
But, I mean, nothing's been done since July.
That's your village manager. I mean, I can write another letter if you'd like.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, I, my guess, my suggestion would be that, I think we need to take a look at this and get these clipped and resolved more timely than months from July. And now, this is November, almost December.
Did you want me to handle that, or the village manager?
I would suggest the village manager.
Yeah, yeah.
But all of these need attention, because these are.
It would be a note to the village manager, basically.
Yeah.
Okay. And just a reminder, as these things come up in our meeting, these are to be handled. You see this, you get this, you contact the village manager, you ask him any questions. Doesn't necessarily need to be done at a meeting, because that's just an individual question, but changing it format, I absolutely understand. That would be a group discussion.
I do have an update on one of them. Which, per my memo that I passed out to everybody.
That was the number.
That too?
Yes.
I have received the payment per the court stipulation and a permit request. So we are working on resolving that one.
Thank you.
And with a due date to be by 12:30.
Correct.
Yep.
That's what we just received, too, right?
So item number seven, we are dispersments.
One comment on the DDA meeting minutes, their draft form. I don't know if, they probably haven't met yet. Have they met yet for this month?
Yes, they've been approved.
They approved them?
Correct.
Well, a note on page two indicating that the DDA Executive Director received a 30% performance-based raise.
Not 30%.
It says 30% in the minutes.
Total 6%, but I saw.
Right.
I was able to figure out, it must have been.
I mean, I can figure that out, too. I'm just saying, it's like, so.
And it's not our minutes, so I didn't worry about it.
It was just a comment during, that if they've already approved them, to.
All right. I will note that, though.
I would have had a problem if they gave him a 30% increase.
It's in writing, yeah, right.
All right, Liz, we're here to appreciate it. Good point. All right.
I have a question on number 30. In the past, and I think we did do business with Detroit Salt Company last year, too, but we've also gotten our salt from the MI.
That is through M-I deal.
This is the, okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
That is the early fill.
And this is what we had already.
Isn't that the rarely filled?
I know, the rarely filled. So this is what we had actually booked for last year, because you had to book in advance, right?
I saw that, Dan.
Do you know how much, how much that was?
It was at a high rate. It was.
Not the cost of the pound, or the tons? How much did we get, how much did we get for that money? I guess, is how much?
We got 350 tons.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, how much we went through this first snowfall?
350 tons. I did give the guys a spreadsheet to fill out. When they're using salt, they can let me know.
To keep track of how much, yeah. Okay. I want to make a motion to approve our bills from October 16th to November 15th, 2019, in the amount of $61,913.27.
Support.
I just want to make a note that that is a large amount this month. It's normally uncommon, but we made our purchase of the Kubota commercial mower.
Right.
As well as our salt, which was $19,000, so.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the table by Councilman Skornica, supported by Councilman Hayden. Any further discussion?
Yes. I see that we have legal on two different line items. Why, why wouldn't there just be all one line item for legal, no? Or that just come in, oh, different dates?
Yeah, keep in mind, when, this is entered, so when I enter it, it's between the 15th and the 16th, so we've received two bills within that time period.
Okay, got it.
And I think I provided them both to you.
You did, yes.
I also saw notes about repair for Salter, which was a little surprised, because I thought that was another one. But I see that's also further down in Bob's report, so we'll probably talk about it then.
Sure.
So on his invoice, dated October 2nd, the September 5th charge, that was preparation of opinion letter for ex officio, not ex official. Would that be correct?
I would assume so, however, I was not part of that discussion, so.
Okay, all right. I'll follow up with the manager on a couple of questions.
He is available to work from home at this time.
Yep, yep.
Any further questions, discussion on the dispersments? All right, hearing none, Liz, can we please have a roll call? Botsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson, absent with notice. Skornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-0. Thank you. Next up will be our public comment. And at this time, that is for agenda items only, so please step up to the podium when it's your turn for an agenda item. If it's a non-agenda item, we will be addressing it later in the meeting, and you're welcome to wait until that. So whoever would like to, please state your name, and if you'd like to share with us where you live.
My name's Pam Delancher. I live at 450 Linda K., in Ortonville. I sent everybody an email, and I'm not sure that everyone got it, because I know of two people that it's bouncing back from. So on Friday, if you did not get one, I have copies.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Mostly, it's because we walked the park as much as we could, a perimeter of it, came across a lot of hunting equipment behind Crescent Hill subdivision on that street. There was quite a few tree stands. There was a gun blind, that's what I have pictures of. Guns are illegal in our village. I don't actually mind the hunting, but if we're going to have rules, that should be gone, too. And I know that it was stated at the last meeting that they were taken down, the ones that the survey group saw. But we, this was November 10th, we saw them.
Did those look like they were new?
A tree stand can be reused.
Yes.
So, you know, hard to tell.
Okay.
So were there names on these? Because it's state law for anybody to be hunting with a stand, they have names and addresses on those stands. Were there any names and addresses on those stands?
I didn't climb up to look.
Okay, Liz, we just have to wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right.
Just write it down until we talk.
Yeah.
No, I'm happy for some feedback, because it's really hard to stand here, talk, and then not get any answers.
During your time.
First opposed to refrain from.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then when we talk about it, if we do have questions, we can have you come on.
Yeah, that's right, three minutes. There is another tree stand right down here in town, behind the red barn, in the gray house, kind of like, right across the creek. Okay, so also, please, 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 do not restrict us from ever developing trails on this property. There's some beautiful land back there. They don't need to be by, near anyone's house. We would need something to cross the creek, tried to get through from the village, and there was just too much water this last week, last weekend. So I wasn't willing to try and go over a log. They were pretty slippery-looking. But there is a bridge down close to Mill Street, but that, I can't, you don't know where, and I don't know what the vacant land is. There's the Village Park, there's vacant land, and then where does property start, a personal? That's hard to tell. I don't know if this is something that should be turned into police, that there's a gun blind back there? That, you know, we didn't see it used, but it's there. And is there any way that you could move up? I think a lot of people here came for the park issue, and it being last on your agenda, I know last month, you moved up the accountant.
And we hope to get through, but unfortunately, it's where it is on the agenda. But we'll try to do our things efficiently. Thank you. If anybody else that would like to speak on agenda items at this time?
Lieutenant Glover from the substation. Just a comment about the blinds. The blinds can be removed by either the village, DPW, or I have a contact with the DNR. So DNR officer actually lives in the township. Just because it's a, looks like a rifle blind, doesn't mean that somebody's not hunting out of it with a crossbow, or a bow for that matter, even though it could be a rifle blind. But if you, if you decide to, I can make a contact, and we can, we can get rid of them if you don't use the DPW.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Hine. I live on Kent Road. I was part of the group that walked the park. We've gone a couple of times now. And I noticed the hunting, no hunting signs have been posted. I did notice that they are posted on the ITC corridor, which we have no jurisdiction over. The property actually begins 50 or 60 feet behind that ITC corridor. And I know one of the gentlemen that lives along there, he says, you know, I don't mind the signs, really, but they are inappropriately posted. There were a couple of areas that would be beautiful for just a little loop walk-around. I would like it to be opened up for, for a park, for the community to use, for everyone to have access to, with, you know, bird watching and nature sites to walk through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from?
Just to correct that ITC corridor issue. We, we do enforce that ITC corridor, as far as trespassing. If we catch vehicles on it, hunters, I mean, we are writing trespassing tickets on it. The ITC corridor is specific, they don't want people on it. So we do enforce the trespassing with local ordinance. Thank you.
So we're not blocking? So it should say, no trespassing, has no company?
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next is our consent agenda, and that includes the Friends of Amos special event request for Christmas in the village. And there is a permit on the, on file currently for the parade. And now, the permit is for the street closings and the general activities for Christmas in the village.
Another question.
That is at the request of CERT.
At the request of CERT, yes. 12 to 5.
So why does it say Friends of Amos and not DDA? Isn't it DDA hosting the Christmas in the village?
No, it's Friends of Amos.
Friends of Amos.
Correct.
Which is a part of DDA.
It's a separate entity.
Well, not any longer.
It's a 501(c)(3). It's a separate from the DDA.
I thought there was an audit in there saying that.
There was. You are correct, but they have since had a board meeting, and the board has changed, where there are, I think, three ex officio members from the DDA and four public members on Friends of Amos. So it's completely separate now.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that in the DDA meeting minutes, actually. Completely separate, but the finances are still managed through the DDA?
They are managed through the village office and the DDA director. You are correct.
All right. All right, thank you.
I had a question on it myself.
All right, so what we have is the Friends of Amos special event permit request.
I have a question on it, that it was previously approved some time ago when we did them.
Correct.
And I'm assuming that the Oakland County, because normally, we get them after the county has signed them.
Correct.
And this one is not signed. So I think it should be continued upon the signature. Correct. OCSO has signed, I'm just waiting on the fire department. So what we're looking for is.
And he's got them signed, so.
Okay.
We're looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Any questions? All right, motion by Councilman Botsu, supported by Councilman Ashman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Next up, we have our trustee committee updates, and we will start on Mark's end.
Okay. I'm glad the chief is here, but next, he's going to speak about something else. But we are going to entertain, for the next meeting, some information in reference to the EMS billing, services, the electronic patient care reporting software through AccuMed. Nothing has, the attorney has looked at it. There's been some changes, one good change and one new change. Good change is, it went down a little bit, our percentage rate, which is good. And there's another change in it that is, I guess, from what I understand, it's throughout, according to the attorney, every community has the change. So it's, it's an added change, but it's by law, pretty much, I guess. But that'll be developed next, next meeting. And for myself, we've got the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and Fred will be here today to field any questions on it, and we like what we have out there so far. So hopefully, we can, we can get this through pretty quickly, but I'll, I'll let Fred handle it. Thank you.
Planning Commission did not meet this month, so I have nothing to report.
In our packet, Bob Huxwell did give us a pretty detailed description of the updates on the drains and the, some of the road, roads he's been working on. The only thing I can say is that on the Crossman Park drain, I know that you saw on our expenses, $5,000 for the topo report. I don't know how that's going to shake out in terms of the route. I, I didn't see a recommendation from that, but that's forthcoming, I'm sure, once Dale gets back. But there's no sense of detail, everything that's been handwritten for us here, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, the Historical Society met early this, early this month, and the ghost tours, the eight o'clock showing was well-attended. The 10 o'clock, we only allowed, it's limited people. We can only really allow about 10 to go through. So we're looking at making changes to that next year, possibly prepay ahead of time, because unfortunately, when there's only 10 that can go through for a group, we have wait lists, and then at 10 o'clock, to call somebody and say, oh, there, you know, nobody to show up, who's going to get up and come out? So they're going to look at, to change that. The Historical Society will be closing after Christmas in the village until next spring in April. They'll be reopening. The blacksmith shop is still 95% run, or is the cement, did the cement?
No, there's been some, we now have the place secured with the door hardware up. The electrician will be in Saturday to finish up the electrical. The cement will have to wait till spring.
Okay, so basically, it's, you know, 98, 99% completed, so, so that's good news. And that's it for me. Real quick, I failed to report last month, the IT, I have discussed with, with Dale about the closet for the equipment, for the ventilation. So we'll work on that this winter as well. And I also want to bring up that I did discuss with Dale, again, on the old mill signage at the last month's meeting. It was discussed about having the old mill sign reattached to the building, because it's, was taken down when DPW painted it several years ago. So that's something that DPW, and I'll just follow up with Dale on what the status, when he talked to Bob about that.
Thank you. The first item on our new business will be the Joint Parks and Rec Master Plan. And what you have is a draft of the master plan included in your packet. And Fred is with us. I know he's been available, we have in our packet, if there was any questions. I don't know if anybody's contacted you, and if not, if anybody has anything else that they wanted to ask. Fred's here for a minute.
First, I'd like to say, it's been a pleasure working with the village, and Pat George, 20 years I've been here. Pat has probably been really outstanding as a representative of the council, and I really appreciate that. And I, and I see him often on at Sherman Park during our baseball program, so it's been a pleasure. And I'm here to ask any questions, just a real quick update with Mary Carlock from the DNR. She said, of course, we got to February first, it has to be emailed to them on, they got to receive it that date in order to write any grants that pertain to the DNR, the Passport Grant, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and the National Resource One. I also met with my park subcommittee today, and for our changes, we're all done. So, it's just a matter of updating the village what they want in this. We send it to Carlisle Workman, I got a bid from them, or a price. If they were just to take this and really throw this away and start a whole new one, it was nine grand. What we paid back in two thousand fourteen of October, we split the cost of four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. So, we're expecting really that price to be lower unless five years they jack it up that much. But the rep from there said that tomorrow I'll be sending them this copy for the changes, and then he'll get a true price for us at that point.
Now, the, the copy that we got said, it, it says right on it, it's a draft master plan, and it's dated December twenty-two, two thousand fourteen. So, then I saw that there's some, a bunch of highlights and manually written text stuff in the, is that proposed changes so far that's been put in there?
Yes, the township had one today, they took out a map that shows linking trailways from like Oxford and all that stuff. That's not on our agenda anymore, it used to be, some of the Sidcock.
Okay, so a lot of this stuff's going to be like updated and taken out based upon the decisions made around the Iron Bell Trail and the impact that's had on our...
Pretty much all that stuff's been eliminated. What we're looking for from the village is also highlighted, Pat George and I went through it, and a lot of it, you know, there's a couple of things, it's pretty obvious, so we don't have Brandon Fletcher anymore, and we don't have Belen anymore, those will be gone, the acreage of school property be reduced. Those kind of things that have the graphs and the population and stuff like that, Carlisle Workman will handle all of that. What they want from us is like more like an inventory, an update on our administrative programs that I wrote in here. But for instance, example from the park, I had to add that we did receive a grant from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, I had to put it in there, showing that, that we're progressing, that we're moving forward with Parks and Recreation. The only thing I really see in here that caught my eye for the township, or for the village, of course, we had to remove the skate park, that's no longer. And as far as your parks go, you do mention the forty, forty-two acres or forty-seven acres over here?
Forty-three, forty-three acres.
No, that, that can be adjusted language-wise, any way you want it.
And I, and I would say at this point in time, Fred, I know my initial, when we talked earlier, my initial thing was, was to drop it. But I want to reinstate that upon further reflection. So, on page thirty-eight, on point number two, on development of the forty-three acre village property, I would put at this point in time that the wording that was originally in there, Fred, stay in there. And that is to prepare a development plan for the undeveloped forty-three acre village property. With the vehicular would be no. Pedestrian access, yes, picnic area, shelter, trails, and preservation of environmentally sensitive areas. So, the only thing that comes out of there, Fred, from, on my final look at it, would be the vehicles. We don't want, certainly want vehicles in there. Other improvements could include development of a boardwalk and viewing platform over the creek and associated wetlands. So, basically, the wording that we had in there originally that we talked about, and I said, we're going to probably remove it, but I feel strongly now that should stay. And the only thing that should come out of there is the word vehicle. So, that's on page thirty-eight. And on page forty-three, same basic thing there, on the project schedule on table ten. If you go down under new park development area, one, two, three, four, five, on the sixth point, again, they mentioned the forty-three acre part, I would like the wording on that to go back to the original wording that's there. And that is to prepare a site development plan for the forty-three acre village property, park property, including, and again, we'll take the vehicular part out of it, but including pedestrian access, picnic area, shelter, trails, boardwalks, viewing platforms, and preservation of the environmentally sensitive areas. So, again, on that, Fred, just as it is, my recommendation to just take the word vehicle out of there. But as it, as it was originally stated to me is fine. So, that's the only two I have on pages thirty-eight and forty-three that relate specifically to the forty-three acre park.
I, I can do that, but I understand, I'm just, I'm just telling you what, what, what my opinion on it is. This is you guys doing this, I'm just helping out here.
I'm just throwing it out to the council, that, that's...
Well, I, I had some things that I had noted in my first rough reading through this. I'm assuming we would need an updated draft to really look over, because there's too many corrections in this for me to, to be able to say, okay, yeah, this looks okay or not, because I'm not clear on a lot of highlights.
I can't.
What the final stuff's going to look like.
Well, I can't, take this and just make changes. It hasn't come from Carlisle Workman.
Okay, but you can provide input to them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, number one is on page, on page eight in the last section, it says, Curiously Creek, if a cold water trout, and it should be is a cold water trout, so that's a typo right there on page eight, that needs to be corrected. Page eight, the last section, towards the bottom line on it, yeah. Okay, on page fifteen, I saw something noted on there and about trustee from the village. And actually, the village does have a Parks and Recreation Committee, so I'm not sure why it was, the committee was struck out and trustee was put in in place of, of our committee, because we do have a Parks and Recreation Committee.
I did not know that, sorry.
In deference to the DDA and their wonderful efforts, on page twenty-six, I would suggest that we, since we're listing other activities the DDA does in the town, I would also suggest adding and including Witch's Night Out, because that's been a very successful event recently.
I had that too.
What page is that, Larry?
Page twenty-six. And on page twenty-seven, if we are adding in the forty-three acres as one of our parks, that's in consideration, how does that impact the village ratings? Because the village, current village rating, it says, hey, they're at four, because they all meet this and that. And obviously, there is no ADA access or, or anything in there. Also, in regards to Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park and the statements about ADA compliance, I think that we should maybe moderate the statements that are intent to always fully comply to that, because I think that the terrain and that particular piece of property is not necessarily, does not necessarily lend itself to full ADA compliance. So, I think that we need to qualify that a little bit and say maybe we're feasible based upon terrain or whatever, because it's not really practical, I think, in my mind, to try to look at ADA, fully ADA compliant paths through that property. So, I think we need to be careful what we say about, you know, being fully compliant with ADA and development of all the parks, in regards to that specific piece of property at least.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they come up with the ratings. I know how you can increase the ratings is get the concession stand down there updated. You probably increase your rates, because it has no accessible parking, no accessible lighting, anything.
Yeah, I, I thought about that too, and I did not see any specific action plan, but that was, I was thinking that that would be an additional action item that maybe should be included in the plan is update the concession stand, because I know that that has been holding us back in some...
That's a good point, we'll do that.
And if we don't complete this, then we can't apply for that.
Right. Yeah, you got five years. Yeah, I think that's a good point, Larry.
So, I think that's pretty much the main points I saw. Until I see more of a draft, I really can't get much more specific feedback on that.
I, I have several recommendations, I guess I can get with you after the meeting. Were you looking for that to be tonight, to, to have all of it? I mean, I, I went through it, you know, rather quickly on mine, but I didn't go through it with a fine tooth comb, but I have several things that I think should be changed or addressed.
Either myself or Pat George, I'm going to send them the township side of things tomorrow.
Okay.
And so, I can get moving forward. They have a pecking order, the sooner we get this in, the sooner it will be approved. You know, they have like a waiting list almost, and we don't want to miss that deadline of February. I don't, because I got grants to continue writing. And I know the village, your opportunities are there as well, for especially the passport, that money's for improving older parks, which we have here in the village. But just let your mind wander and see what you want to do.
Would you be okay with also distributing what you submit to them, to the council, so we can see what changes you're submitting to them already?
On the township side?
Yeah, would you be willing to just, you know, when you submit that to, what was the name again, the company?
Port Carlin Morten.
Yeah. Could you also maybe include the council in distribution, so we see the changes you guys as a basis for what changes we may also...
Yeah, I'll send them to Lynn, and Linda can distribute.
Well, because one, on page thirteen, I would think that we would be referencing our, our most current master plan, even though it's not, it hasn't been approved yet, it's in the distribution mode. But instead of referring to the two thousand eight Trails Master Plan that we're referring...
Talk about thirteen?
On page thirteen.
Yeah, my, my park subcommittee said get rid of this page.
Oh, that's Oakland County's master plan.
Yeah, and then page twelve as well.
It doesn't say that, okay.
Oakland County has approved a master plan.
Yeah, that's, it doesn't say that, because that was a change this...
Oh, okay, all right, got it.
Yeah.
All right, all right, great.
So, page, basically, page twelve, I'm glad you brought that up, page twelve and thirteen.
Okay.
So, my concern would be is, obviously, there's dated two thousand fourteen, there's a lot of strikeups, as trustee Hayden commented about. I'm sure Pat George let you know that we do have a master plan out there for public review right now, and we're close to approving that. How does this plan coincide with that plan, the master, our master plan? And from what I heard trustee George say is the development of, so we have an ordinance out there about, you know, contradicting what trustee George talked about. So, it's important that this plan here match up with whatever path forward we have, similar to what Brandon Township did with their, their trails on the whole Iron Bell thing, you know, similarly. We have to at least make sure we're all on the same page.
Right, you can't have your two plans stating too different.
Right.
They got to match up. And the, the reason why this came up a couple of years, but we're way back in fourteen, is that when you show collaboration, you know, like we, we have a village and we have a township, you show that collaboration, that helps you with your point system. So, with the, everybody working together, it's a win-win situation as far as the points go.
Another comment...
And then just that inventory of parks always helps.
Another comment on page thirty-one, referencing the meeting of September fifteen, two thousand fourteen for a public workshop.
Okay, what's your question?
Wouldn't we be removing that, if this is going to be our, you know, a master plan going forward? Are you going to be having a public workshop that's updated? Why would we want to reference a two thousand fourteen workshop?
No, we...
So, that would need to be updated. And then this information that follows, the new, the bulleted points, because it says how the, the surveys and the number of votes for these things, then that all would change based on, so that would need to be either deleted, or if you get a new public one, it would need to be reinserted, so that was not correct information.
Well, if you're not going to do another one, you would leave it, that would be the most current information. But if you are going to do one, right, then it's changed out.
We're not going to do one, we're going to have a public input once we have the draft done. That'd be, I'm hoping to schedule that for early January, the public input, and then get the approvals.
Is that going to be the public workshop that you're referencing here, is this going to be updated? Or you're not, because otherwise, then this should be strictly...
I don't know if they refer it to as the same thing. I was reading somewhere for a, basically, when this is done and all the corrections are made and we get a true copy of it, it gets set on the clerk, clerk's counters, and it's notified that there's going to be a public, not a workshop, but a input, and they get the chance to read it prior to the joint meeting, the township and the village council will be a joint meeting, and people have their chance to say something about the master plan at that time. And then that, if there's a, you announce a decision from the two boards that, that make a change, then we make the change, and it gets submitted.
So, I have a question in regards to the, the DNR Passport Grant, you had commented the, about the Sherman Park concession stand, and I thought that the village took that over and submitted that in its pending now, correct?
We did, that is correct. However, if this joint master plan for Parks and Recreation is not passed by February first, we cannot apply for any grants next year until we have a plan in place.
But that grant has already been, it's already in and submitted, correct?
Correct, for this year, but if we don't get it, we can't apply next year.
And when will we know whether we're getting it or not?
We won't know until the end of the year.
It's going to be anytime.
Next month.
You got, you got your first points here, the first round of scores, where, actually, the second round of scores came in. So, now, we're waiting for the master sheet of all the scores. And then shortly after that, they announce the winners, basically.
Yeah, so to me, there's just a lot of strikeups on it. I, I think it's important that it's very clear what, what you're recommending for us to approve, and to make sure it does coincide with our current master plan, that it has been pretty much reviewed and, you know, not necessarily approved by council, but, but close to it, right? So, it should be fairly close to what's out there now.
If you got recreation in your ma, your other master plan already, why are you doing this one?
We don't.
There, there is recreation.
There's references to recreation.
There is a section for recreation in the master plan.
It doesn't go in detail?
We don't have a separate Parks and Recreation Plan, you're right.
We just need to make sure that the references that overlap with the parks, that's all consistent with what our current master plan states, as well as this.
Your, your current scores right now, this goes by this master plan, so in the future, when you write a, you, when you write a grant from two thousand twenty onto two thousand twenty-five, you have to have that new master plan with the DNR.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're coming into the holiday time season, and we really, between now and February, we have December meeting, which is coming up fairly short, because it's been bumped ahead because of Christmas, and then we have our January meeting, and then it's going to be February. So, we only meet once a month. I would say it's, it's really important that these changes get moving, get to us as soon as possible, so we can at least have some time to discuss on one of our meetings prior to when it has to be in.
I don't want to put anybody on the bus, but Pat George and I started this way back in April sometime. And then Pat George was removed by your, your manager. So, it got delayed, and then I, I brought it up to Dale briefly, he wasn't too sure.
Bill said he would take it.
So, that's why we're behind the eight ball on this. I had this all done, and I started doing the village stuff. And then I called Pat George, and I said, we got to get moving on this, because Bill Spratt at the time, he said, I'm going to do it, and he took Pat off it.
So, now, you've given it to us, and we have a chance to look over the draft, and we have a chance to give you the information and get that to you. Ideally, when would you like to see our input on that, and suggestions, and questions and concerns? When would you like to see that?
I would say by, it would be, I would say December second, because I got a township board meeting, but if you do it within that first two weeks of December, that gives us time, you have a village meeting, when?
Seventeen, sixteen.
Okay.
I think that's going to be the earliest that we could come together as a council to actually approve...
Right.
But in order for him to be prepared for that meeting, we need to get the suggestions and information and questions done with you, so you can have a, something for us to...
Your next council meeting would be great.
And Fred, just so you know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I can, but I would, if, if you can get a, the two thousand twenty master plan from the consultants, and I don't care if it's PDF, a PDF file, or a Word document, or whatever, if they would send us what they electronically have, I think we can work on this pretty quick to satisfy the...
We, ourselves make the changes, we brought...
Between Kara and you and me...
Kathy Thurman and I talked to Carlisle Workman this morning, and...
Yeah, if they give us an electronic copy, I think we can, we can move on reasonably quick.
We, we asked for that this morning.
And they should have that.
Yeah, and he, I can't think the gentleman's name, Doug Ledoux or something like that, but he said that he would look into it, because you're right, correctly, we, if we had it, we make the changes.
And I think honestly on that, Fred, we could, we could make, and I, I'm with the council on this. We can, we need a clean copy, and I think we get a clean copy in a day on that.
So, Fred, when would you like our stuff to you, so you can do that? When would you like our input to you?
Oh, for the clean, so we can get a clean copy?
Yes.
Probably by, just after the holiday, if you can, because that gives me time, or gives them time to send me... Because that gives me time, or gives them time, to send me an electronic copy. And then, so I say, within ten days or so.
So that next, the end of that next week?
Yeah.
But I, okay.
What's the date?
I think even earlier, Fred.
The date on that, the Friday after?
Because all they wanna see is what this thing actually is gonna look like.
Gonna look like, yeah.
And what we can do with Kara and you and myself, I think we can do it in a day. We can take care of the township revisions and put down the village in a day. And then, and then print it, and then get that to the council. We could do that pretty quick. We could do it this week if we really got on it. And then, all I'm saying there is, and you got it done.
We got a short week.
And then we got a, we got a much better chance of looking at it and getting it back to you quick.
So in order to have the items available for Fred to bring back to us on December sixteenth, we need them due to you by December sixth.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Because it's gonna take time to get Carl Alwerman to send that over.
Really?
Oh, yeah. It's a short week this week, too.
Who do they work for?
I'm booked solid this week.
Well, I gotta stick it, that's good. I'll go down and pick it up, you know?
George and Jackson and all those other guys on that green stuff.
All right, is there any other questions at this point for Fred? And we'll send out an email reminder to get with you, and we'll call and bug you and question you and everything else.
Yeah, we gotta remember, I don't know what the cost is, so I'll get that to you as soon as possible. We're gonna talk about that again tomorrow. Because that first cost he gave us, I don't think the townships are even gonna use them. You know, to throw this one out, start a new one, was nine grand. But if we can revise this, is what we're gonna do, yeah, we'll change some pictures in our language. But hopefully, it's under five grand again.
Yeah. I would like to make a recommendation to council, and just my, I mean, you wanna move things along. We have a master plan. In that master plan is recreation plan for Ortonville. If we were to give that to you, all right, as a basis for what the council sees as a recreation for Ortonville, you use that as a basis, I think that's a heck of a start right there.
Well, I think shouldn't the township, shouldn't the township have that already?
Pat has that already, at their meetings, Pat has, you know, that front of them, the two of them can-
I was gonna say, I think we've already decided to send on the master plan to surrounding communities. So that would include Brandon Township. So Brandon Township should already have a copy, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, you should have a copy of the township already.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so what we need is a motion to table that to December, and a date to-
We need a motion to table it?
Okay, a recommendation, we don't have to have a motion, but we have a suggested motion based on what. All right, I guess we can choose to table it till December, is that consensus?
I think so.
Yeah, that's fine. I think it's still just unfinished business.
And then anybody with any input questions, et cetera, please get with Fred by December sixth.
Yeah, okay.
I think if we have an agenda item that we're tabling, don't we need to have a motion to table it?
Well, I think it's just gonna be part of unfinished business next meeting, isn't it?
We're gonna move it unfinished, so a motion to move it unfinished business, or?
That's fine, that's fine. Well, this is, this is new business, so I thought it would just, since we didn't complete it, I would think it would just be unfinished.
So I'd make a motion to take the rough draft of the Parks and Rec master plan discussion and table it at this point in time, and put it down in-
Unfinished.
Unfinished business.
For?
For four.
December?
For December.
Good motion.
Yeah, like that, you know, something like that.
Anybody support that?
I think I heard you say you support it.
I support.
How could it be unfinished business if we haven't done anything with it, though?
Well, we discussed it.
We just did.
Because it was, it was new now, this is the first time we heard it. Next time, we'll have already heard it, so then it's, it's old business, I guess.
So is there any further questions or comments or anything on this at this point? Or are we ready for the vote? All right, so let's get you with that to us, just to be sure.
A motion by George, supported by Bryce, to move the Parks and Rec master plan discussion to December meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Pat, you got time tomorrow at ten o'clock or something?
Positively.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow at ten.
You bet, it'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is B, which is the draft emergency management plan. I know there was some confusion, some said they've received it in their electronic packet, some said it was not in their printed packet. It did come at the end, so I'm not sure who has it, who doesn't have it. It is a draft of the plan. And if Dave, if you don't mind, just briefly stepping up and telling us what we're looking at, and then we have questions and comments, we have the month to refer to you before our meeting in December, which we will then vote on.
So what you have in front of you is basically a copy of what Brandon Township has adopted as their support emergency operations plan that is supporting of Oakland County. We are a village of less than ten thousand people. You don't need a plan, but it is recommended that you do have one. The last time we had one, Tanya, I can't remember-
Nineteen eighty-four, and then we were in on yours in two thousand twelve.
Right. So, and all it does is, it kind of identifies whose role, if there's an emergency, as far as, you know, what's the fire department gonna do, what's the sheriff's department gonna do, that type of thing. What's the responsibility of the village president, the treasurer, and so on and so forth. If you have any questions or concerns or changes to the document, probably the best thing to do would be to email Tanya and myself, and then we can look at making those changes. But pretty much, it's the same document in Ortonville for Brandon Township, for all the other communities that sit inside Oakland County.
Which is a tiny version of Oakland County, is correct.
Right. Oakland County's, right, now Oakland County has two plans that they have. They have the one that they put out publicly, and then they have the one that's very detailed, that is not for public purview. That one is about almost nine hundred and some pages. So it's very, very detailed, has all the, potentially, some other homeland security issues inside that. So that's why it's not a provided document. We went through and we made some changes, basically took out Township and put in Village where appropriate. Not to say that we didn't miss anything, not to say that we didn't miss any, any grammatical errors, so.
It's a draft.
If you see any of those, by all means, please let us know, and we can correct that.
Okay. Just right off the bat, I noticed that the very first section, community profile, seems to be Brandon Township.
It is.
Yep.
So I was, I was gonna ask, is this, is that section, does that need to be updated to reflect the actual village as opposed to the township?
Yeah, if Tanya would like to write that, she could do that.
And I think, and that was a discussion that we kinda left, are we going to just say Brandon Town, or the village of Ortonville, in Brandon Township? Or are we going to just, you know?
I think much of this information, other, you know, we don't know-
You're one square mile.
Yeah, but it identifies various sites and things like that, that are for hazmat and stuff. And I think that if we just take a look and say, "Okay, let's skinny that down," or what, just what falls within the village limits, we can just update that pretty easily.
Yep.
The other information, I think we can probably get from our master plan.
But we are still utilizing the resources of the township, so we have to keep in mind-
But I don't think, I don't think our community itself has ten sites that contain hazardous substances.
I don't think our community itself has fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-five resources.
So I just think the community profile, if this is specific for village, we probably should make the community profile.
So you have the draft in front of you, and you can go ahead and bring any questions, comments, discussions.
That was my comment.
And we will then have the formal available to vote in December.
Okay.
So I have a question, does any of this require budgetary dollars to support?
Oh, if there's an emergency here, absolutely, there'll be budgetary dollars that somebody's gonna be spending.
Does it fall under the, the, okay, you know, the village of Ortonville pays our taxes to support the fire department, et cetera, so the dollars would come out of your budget, right?
Comes out of, so what, what happens is, it's gonna do a couple of things. It's gonna come out of the village, you may be responsible for certain things, the fire department's gonna be responsible for certain things. The key is, is that, and I think you should put a placeholder as we do in our budget. We've talked about this in our budgets, that we have that five thousand dollar placeholder in case there's a disaster. So then that way, if a disaster hits, we spend the five thousand dollars. And then when the county and the state and the feds, as it ramps up, says, "Did you exhaust your disaster funds?" Absolutely, we did, we spent the five thousand dollars that we had budgeted. I think that would be smart on the village's part as well. That way, you're protected, but we've done the same thing in the township. We've made sure that there's five thousand dollars there.
Since we're about one tenth size, could we be five hundred dollars?
Well, you can put, you could put whatever you want in there. That's just a recommendation. We looked at what our budgets were, and we said, "Okay, realistically, what can we, if we had to?" And that's what we put down. So you can, you can change that to whatever you'd like, Dan. I mean, that, that does, I hope that answers your question.
Oh, it does, and I think it's a good point, because I know we don't have that line in our budget, so we need to consider that.
Otherwise, we, yeah, we-
No, no, that's a good point. And I, I should've thought of that when we did ours for the village, or for the township and for the fire department.
What sort of impact does having a plan or not having a plan have in relation to getting, like, say, federal aid and such, in the case that there is a disaster or something like that?
So here's the problem when we talk about federal aid.
Or even state aid for that matter.
Well, first off, it has to go to the county, and you're already protected because you're in a community of less than ten thousand people. It's already assumed that you're gonna want the county to step in on your behalf. All this does is kind of cement that paperwork and cement that the county has a obligation to the village of Ortonville. As far as when we start talking finance-wise, typically, a lot of times, what happens with federal disasters is the funds don't necessarily trickle down to the consumers. They trickle down to the state, and the county gets a little bit, and then the village or township get even smaller amounts. What it may end up being is that you get low-interest loans. If you look at some of the flooding that occurred last year in the springtime, there was municipalities that had horrendous flooding areas and lots of damages. And unfortunately, those damages weren't covered, but what they did say is that they give them low-interest loans. We're from the federal government, we're here to help you. I don't know how else to answer that question. The reality of it is, with nothing, you're still somewhat protected. I think having this document, like I said, cements on that, you know, Oakland County does have some obligation to the village of Ortonville, as well does the state to the county and the feds to the state. Again, it's, it's gonna really depend on the size of the impact. They also look to see how many people have homeowner's insurance, that type of thing.
So the placeholder can be very, very small.
It can be very small, yeah. Like I said, you know, the fire department, we use twenty-five hundred out of one budget, twenty-five hundred out of another. That gives us our five thousand, and the township did the same thing.
Mark.
No, all good questions, and if there's any other questions I have or concerns, again, if you'll get it to Tanya and myself, then we can see if it fits in here. It may or may not, depending on what it is.
Any further questions right now?
Yeah.
All right, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
All right, so next up, we will be our new C, which is luminaries in the village. And Liz, did you wanna touch on that?
I just wanna confirm, we are still doing this. We wanna do about eighteen hundred luminaries. I just wanna order supplies, make sure.
Yep.
Sure, okay. I don't think we're all, anybody have a concern?
Sounds good.
I would, I would recommend reaching out to local Boy Scouts, et cetera, whoever volunteered over the years. Maybe we should solicit, because it does require a lot of hands to get those bags out.
And I do have a scout or a den mother who volunteers her trailer on an annual basis. I'm sure she'll do it again this year, I just have to reach out to her.
Are we also reaching out to high school for, like, the honors program students that need community service work?
I have not done that, but I certainly can.
Would you like to plug the dates for that while we're here?
It would be Christmas Eve for delivery, so I'm not sure when council wants to actually do the luminaries, if they wanna prepare them on Christmas Eve, day before. Christmas, I think, is on a Wednesday this year.
Last year, we did them early, and I thought it worked out very well. And then we just distribute them Christmas Eve, so-
I think it's twenty-second and twenty-fourth, but Sunday is the twenty-first, would that be?
Sunday's the twenty-second, Monday's the twenty-third.
Oh, wait. I think it'd be nice to do them a little early, so we can get, you know, we can get done with them sooner. So, you know, do them on Sunday, so that we can then, they're already made up, because it goes pretty quickly to get a production line going, and then they can just be distributed the morning of.
So that's the twenty-second?
Because usually, they, they should be all done and distributed, like, gosh, nine-thirty, because it's well-oiled machine, get them in there and get them out, because the trailer's distributed, and- Yep.
So we're looking at the twenty-second Sunday for doing, and the twenty-fourth on Christmas Eve for delivery, correct?
Why wouldn't we do it Monday?
Monday?
Yeah, because then, with sometimes, if the sand is wet, which, I don't know, has the DPW gotten the sand?
Not yet, I'm waiting for your approval.
Yeah, we need to get the sand order, so it can start drying out, because when the sand is wet, it's just the bags, and as they sit, it just loosens the bag. So I would suggest that we do it Monday, and then distribute on Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, Monday morning, we have more people working than on Sunday. I mean, then we have more, you know, people available schedule-wise on holiday time.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the Boy Scouts, because they're already gonna be on their vacation, so. Because I just, we've done it before, and then the bags fall apart, it just doesn't, even with the wax bags. That, you know, we go through all that work, and they just, they fall apart Monday.
Okay.
Makes sense.
All right, so what you're looking for is purchase?
I was just gonna say a time, so let's say-
No, I just wanted to, you know-
To go ahead and order them, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, consensus of the council.
And then I think that we need to put a time in there that we would be composing, compiling them Monday, let's say, ten AM.
Okay.
You know, I think that, because that should get posted out there, so when you're discussing it with the Boy Scouts and whatnot, to be there.
Okay.
And what time on the twenty-fourth?
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, they usually get delivered pretty early on Christmas Eve.
All right, wonderful. E will be a redevelopment-ready community, and we had talked about that last month, and kinda gave you the links, the information on finding about the, who was it, the M D?
M D E C.
M D E C, I always wanna say C E, had come and had a chance to meet with some of our DDA and some of our area businesses, too, as well. And we got a chance to get some input on them and the importance of becoming a redevelopment-ready community, and what that might bring for us in the way of grants, and what that might do for our businesses. So we also have a chance to have online learning from that. We also have a chance to have community involvement with, and I say community, I should say committee involvement with the Planning Commission, the DDA Council, have liaisons involved with that. Again, more support for our businesses. So it is something that other communities already do, we have not had the opportunity to do that. It will be a little bit of legwork, it will be a little bit of time. And with that request, then it would be one person from the office staff and one person from the planning committee in order to begin the education for that. Matt is already trained, and he is the only one that I know that's completed it on DDA. I know a couple of us have started some of the training, so that's where that's at with that.
Which Matt, by the way?
Jenkins, sorry.
So how does this differentiate the DDA from their accreditation already?
This is a community accreditation, it's not in a DDA accreditation.
Yeah, this is a village-level thing.
This is independent, so each community is accredited or not accredited throughout the state. He is just personally trained.
And it also does open up maybe some grants for, for the village?
It says, oh, it says that it's at no cost, but then it says, use, allow use of limited resources within its current budget, and then future budgetary action. I guess I was, I looked it over, and for me, I, I don't, I guess I don't understand it enough to make a decision. I mean, I read it, looked at it, and it's like, okay, what's, I guess, I'd like to get the manager's thoughts on it. But for me, I mean, looking at it, it's like I'm perplexed by some of it.
It seems like that's why we have the DDA, right? And that's, for redevelopment, that is DDA, right? They're the ones that drive, and we support the DDA, right? So why do we need a separate one? It seems like redundant.
Well, we, we don't, it's just to become a redevelopment community, they recommend that you have more than one person through more than one board to be educated on it. So if for some reason your DDA person was to leave, or your village person was to leave, or your planning commission person was to leave, you have more than one person educated on it.
And it's a revolving training and a revolving standing accreditation. So what it does, kind of, just throwing out there briefly, are empty spaces. We're redevelopment-ready, and we're going to advertise for that, and we're going to put it out there. We're going to tell you exactly what our space holds and exactly who we can and can't fit there, and so we are advertising it. So when somebody's getting their money to open their business, they're looking for certain communities, and they're getting plugs, and they're going, so this is an instantaneous ready for you. We've done all the legwork, you know, let's, let's have you come join us. So that's the benefit of us, is it helps us define the best fits, and it helps us, you know, to fill that. Like Liz said, also the grants for it, there's a big difference, there's a lot of matching grants, there's a lot of private business grants. So there's things with this that, you know, within the state, these communities that are that, they're actually reaching out to you. So it makes us a little more attractive, and it like, makes us a little more interested. It is, it is legwork, and that, by putting in the legwork, you then are, you know, reaping the rewards. And that's at the village level, so that's something that the village would carry.
I seem to think that I do recall this being mentioned during some of our discussions during the master, the formation of the master plan. And I, I do remember them saying that this is a step that the village could take that would improve their chances of getting grants and stuff like that. And it is a valuable tool, because it does get taken into consideration when they're looking at giving grant money and such, so. I think that knowing that sometimes in the past we have just fallen short just a few points of getting some of these grants, any little thing we can do to try to improve our chances, I think would probably be a positive thing for our community to do.
So Matt is the only one that certified then, at this point?
At this time.
So, uh, let's see, it says, the RSC program and to include the village council, planning commission, DDA, and other staff. So the other staff is?
Office.
Whoever, whoever. Okay, and then planning commission DDA, so they would just appoint whoever they wanted?
Correct. What they want is multiple levels of investment.
Yeah, I would assume it would be your village manager, and maybe somebody.
Whoever we decide to appoint in that then? Okay.
So DDA can have somebody involved.
Has Dale seen this?
Um, he does have a copy of tonight's packet.
Okay, so he has a packet, I just, guess I was just curious what he, what he knows about it and what he, what the.
He may, he may be familiar with it too.
Uh, yeah, and we can, we can always put it on December's agenda, maybe with Matt or somebody from the DDA here to give you a little bit more insight.
I would, I personally would appreciate that, just to get a better understanding of how that, or then what, historically, how it's been.
Sounds like you want to make a motion to postpone.
Table.
I don't know what the official word is. Last time I said table, they said it was postpone, so.
Yeah. That's, I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone the redevelopment-ready community to our December 16th meeting.
Support.
All right, motion by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Ashman. Questions, comments, discussion? I do have one, I would just like to mention my frustration, this was brought up in September to please review, to ask questions. Matt has received no questions on this, and here we are again, waiting another month to get something started, because we have not done our homework and been able to ask him the questions, you know, ask me, I've received nothing. So I would hope that this in December will then be at a better spot where we can go ahead and decide what we'd like to do and make a decision.
I think what we like to do is, I think it, it's good, it's just who's going to do it, right? And if Dale's going to, if we're going to appoint Dale as part of it, then it would be nice if he was here.
Right, but we've had 30 days to ask him those questions, and that's, that's what my frustration is. For a month, we did nothing. For a month, we've had a chance to investigate and ask questions and research. So that's all I'm stating with it. I, I hope it does move forward, if it doesn't, and that's a consensus of us, it's fine.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is just one of the steps, which is to say, hey, we want to apply to become this type of community. It doesn't say that we have to specifically.
That's fine, I mean, council didn't have to approve or, you know, support my motion or vote on it.
Well, we have to, we have to vote on this first, but.
We're approving to put, put.
We're voting, yeah.
Staff.
Yeah, well, voting up, it's like.
Through education.
The motion needs to be, vote, vote on the motion and see, see what council's.
All right, so.
Who's that?
All right, so we have a motion to postpone to the December, December meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, thank you.
Guess that was everybody.
And next up, which is D, we have the Deputy Eric Overall Highway Dedication.
Actually F, I think, or E, 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 we missed, condensed down one, yeah.
Um, and just a mention that the dedication was on, um, ah, I lost my date. Sorry, give me a minute, I'm looking at the date of his anniversary. It was Wednesday, November, the 6th of Wednesday, and the sign is now up at M 15 and 75. And so I welcome you to please take a look and take a moment to remember Detective Overall, and we appreciate the service that we have received. Item 12 for unfinished business, we have the master plan, no current update at this time.
So we don't know where that's at?
Actually, yep, I have a, a letter from McKenna that I have to get the Planning Commission Secretary, who is Rick McAvinci, to come into the office to sign. And the plan will actually be sent electronically to several entities.
So it hasn't been sent out yet?
That is correct.
Well, it, is there, do you know if there's going to be a Planning Commission meeting next week on the 3rd?
It's up to Lee, we don't really have any new business, so.
Okay, because I was going to say it could be signed at that meeting, but if, if that meeting's going to be canceled.
I've been in contact with Rick, he can come into the office as soon as I have the letter.
All right, B is our Crosman Drain, Park Drain. And Dan, did you want to?
Yeah, no, no further updates, other than we know that the topo has been done in, in a direction as to where that drain's going to go, whether it's a straight shot to the creek or up and around into a main drain that's already existing, so plan isn't.
Working on it.
Yeah, they're working on it, yeah.
Thank you. C will be the fiscal year 2018-19 audit acceptance. We did briefly discuss the audit at the last one, we need to officially accept the auditor's presentation, please. So we have a suggested motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit submitted by Manor Corstery, Corsterson, as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions, comments?
I'm assuming that this page is the exact copy that came out of that audit then?
That is correct, I just wanted to give you some information on that.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, thank you. Next is the 2020 Cable Budget Acceptance. We also discussed that at the last meeting, we would like for an official approval, please, with the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2019 Ortonville Cable Television Budget as presented.
Support.
Was it Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I'm sorry, that, that was the budget you said, right?
This is the budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Budget acceptance.
And that should have happened last month, I think we just missed it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Following that will be the Cable Franchise Consulting Agreement Acceptance, which also we discussed at the last meeting. We're looking for an official acceptance motion.
Is it normally a two-year contract? I couldn't recall, and I don't.
Yes, that is what we did last time.
Okay.
That is correct.
So I'm looking for a motion on that.
Make a motion to accept the 2019 Ortonville Cable Television Budget as presented. Actually, we did the budget already. The, make a motion to accept the 2020 to 2021 Cable Consulting Agreement with Greg Murman as written. Support.
Any questions, comments?
I know, oh, let me see. This is, is this identical to what the last contract was? This is the same? Because I know we made, we made revisions to the last one, so is this?
I believe so, you'd have to talk to the village manager on that.
Okay, because I know we had in there about the responsibility of the Facebook and then the, the meetings that are, you know, the DDA, the Planning Commission, and the village, so if.
And I, and I personally, I can post a Facebook myself.
You have the oversight of, of the.
Yeah.
It's not about the posting, it's about the oversight.
I understand.
Yeah, just to be sure that this was the same one as last time.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. F will be the Waste Ordinance Amendment, and we have received a copy of that. Looking for a motion, we did discuss that already, but we do need an official motion again as well.
The, when is this, this is?
And that is.
Solid waste, yeah.
And that's just changing it from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction.
Which we already have given verbal approval, we just need an official motion.
The only, the only question I had about the way that they, it was formatted, because they have A, B, C, and then it starts over A, B, C, and the way it showed up in my electronic packet. Do you have? Yeah, do you have? I'm, I'm just wondering if it came.
Oh, wait, I do.
Yeah, I've got it.
It's, it's A, B, C, and then A, B, 1, 2.
Yeah, see, this is what I mean right here, it starts A, B, C, and then I didn't know if these were supposed to be indented, because it starts over as A, B again at the same indentation, so I'm assuming that was formatting, but I did want to say that needs to be corrected before we adopted it.
And we're not going to pay for him to fix it.
No, but I mean, I can, it, it needs, you know, it should be properly formatted and stuff, if we're going to be making a.
Agree.
Motion on that.
We, we could make a motion and have that.
Pending the formatting.
Pending, yeah, formatting. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To approve the ordinance amendment, amend section 50.99 of chapter 50 of Title V of the Code of Ordinances as presented, changing the penalty for violation from a misdemeanor to a municipal civil infraction.
Pending.
Pen, pending, correct formatting, per Larry's.
Do we have a support?
I'll support it, thank you, Larry.
Any questions, comments?
I know this was discussed many times in the past, that this would be a better enforcement mechanism for a lot of our ordinances on the Planning Commission, so.
I think.
I think this is a good way to go.
I think Liz will be very pleased with the streamlining, make her life a little easier.
Shirts.
Who supported that?
Uh, it was motion by Butsu, supported by Councilman Hayden. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And next up is the Municipal Civil Infraction Ordinance Amendment. Again, we had verbal agreement, we would like to have please a official motion for this as well.
Well, this, did we see this exact wording before? Because I mean, when I was reading through this, there's, I did find several things that I had some questions about.
Were they on this?
Well, first of all, let's see, if we take a look just at the whole section 10 dot 11, section 10 dot 11 is titled Definitions, and it says, as used in this chapter. However, we already have a section 10 dot 02 that's also titled Definitions in our existing Code of Ordinances, and it seems to me that this would be confusing to have 10 dot 2 definitions and 10 dot 11 definitions within the same section. So I, I was questioning either whether there was some way that these should maybe be incorporated into 10 dot 02, or this should be retitled maybe to make it clear that it's a separate set of definitions.
What does the 10 dot 02 definition say? Does it say in this chapter?
Ah, let me see if I got that, okay. Village Code of Ordinances, no, it actually, 10 dot 2 states it a little differently, let me get down to that section. Okay, here we are. 10 dot 02 says definitions, and says terms used in this code. So the, the 10 dot 11 says as used in this chapter, the 10 dot 02 says as used in this code.
So it's clarifying, and it's, and it's breaking down it further, it's not going against it all.
Yeah, it seems like these definitions are more narrowly defined specifically for the municipal civil infraction.
So that's, it's fine where it's at, because it doesn't apply to the whole code, it only applies to the chapter.
But we should probably retitle it, so it's clear that these are different definitions than what's intended, so. Definitions, I don't know what we would title it officially, but definitions pertaining to municipal civil infractions or something like that. But that was just one point, we already defined municipal civil infraction, which is defined in this new section. We've already have it defined in the 10 dot 02 section already, so, and the wording is almost identical, so. You know, redefine it once, and then we define it again a second time in this section.
So who reviewed this prior to coming here? I mean, would this have been?
Dale.
The attorney and Dale, correct.
Yeah, and then there's a few places in there in section 10 dot 15G and, and that 16A2 where they use different wording than the, in order to be consistent, they should just continue to use municipal civil infraction violation notice. 10 dot 15G instead says municipal ordinance violation notice, but that's not consistent with the previous terminology used leading up to that section.
So, did you talk to Dale about these?
No, I just, I.
So it sounds like we need to.
This was a long packet I did not have a chance to get with Dale prior to the council meeting.
Okay, because we don't want to prove anything if we're going to make changes, we obviously need to make sure those changes are correct. So is that something that we'd like to table, and then we can voice our concerns to Dale?
And then also on the first page, the A, you know, it's like the, the A Act, A Authorized, A Bureau, it's like.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of formatting stuff that came in, not right. I, I kind of ignored that.
It may be right, it just may be the way that we, you know, depends on how, what Dale opened it on, is what's doing the formatting issues. That's not how he sent it.
And on 10 dot 16A2 subsection 3, I'm wondering, because that sounds almost like it's a definition that's embedded within this particular piece, and I'm wondering if that particular item should be instead moved up into the definitions in, in the earlier section 10 dot 11.
I make a motion.
I can, I can share these with Dale and.
Yeah, then.
Okay. In that case, I will make a motion to postpone the Municipal Civil Infractions Ordinance Amendment to the December meeting.
Support.
Motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Ashman. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, thank you. And Dan, would you like to touch again on the schoolhouse drain, or are you all set with that? It's up to you.
No, no further updates on the schoolhouse drain right now. All we know.
Have you thought of anything since you just talked about it?
I'm not going to, I'm going to wait for Dale to get back with, with what comes out of that.
So we'll leave that there. All right, the basketball court drain repair and replacement.
That's.
Already done?
That's done, and. That's done, and, and according to Bob, he expects it to drain and flow. There's always going to be some water there, it sounds like, but they were able to get it repaired.
And they'll resurface the basketball court in spring.
Right.
Thank you. All right. Jay will be the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park ordinance.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to form a committee to investigate topics related to proposed ordinance and postpone action on the proposed ordinance until the committee reports their findings. The committee forum should address the following topics. Number one, review current park regulations to verify the existing ordinance if enforced properly, addresses the issues reported by trustee Ashman. Number two, compile a comprehensive list of residents' views on the village park, including all past surveys and public input. Number three, perform an evaluation of how other natural areas and nature preserves in Michigan manage those properties and human activities in them. Number four, create a proposal for forming a formal survey of the habitat and wildlife that currently exists in the village park. And number five is, is any additional topics requested by the council to be investigated. I got copies of my proposed ordinance for everybody.
Would you have any chance to put this in our packet?
Uh, this is a motion I
Motion by Councilman Hayden, do we have a support?
Support.
This is something
Support by Councilman George. Okay, any discussion?
This is something I put a lot of thought into, because I know how strong the community feels about this, and many council members also feel about this. And I think we owe it to our community to take our time to thoroughly research and make sure that the ordinance, whatever ordinance we do pass for that related to this park, that we do it right and have the right language. If that ends up being the language that was currently proposed, that would be fine, if we can validate it. But right now, the way it stands, I don't have a single piece of reference material to validate that the ordinance language we have currently is supported by facts, reference material available to us. So that's why I want to make sure we take the time, do it right, and make sure that we do our homework on this one. I think we owe it to our community.
Any other discussion?
I still think we have issues, and we heard here tonight that we have clear violations of hunting going on that property, so this, whatever this motion here doesn't circumvent the fact that it's been some time now since we instituted no hunting on that property, and to hear from residents out there tonight, this, that, that motion, what you just presented, does not prevent things like that from happening, so I just want, that's my comment.
But our current motion, our current ordinance does already. So that's in place, so we can enforce these items if we feel there is a concern, correct?
No, that's why I thought we were doing the ordinance, because it was
It doesn't, it doesn't. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe it was Manager Stewart that made the recommendation, or supported, I should say, or, or advised, that we I lost my train of thought. That we
We, we have
He said not every park was the same.
That, right, that it was okay, that we didn't have to have one, one categorically ordinance, that it was okay to be specific per one, and he, he advised that we should do that.
So he said we could repeat, but what I'm saying is, we already have an ordinance in place. He said, yes, you can repeat it in this ordinance draft, but we already have an ordinance that does meet those concerns right now. So we don't have to wait for any ordinance to, new ordinance to enforce.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that. I, I agree, this, this is a special piece of property, and does require some special consideration. But right now, we don't have enough facts about exactly the type of habitat or wildlife in the park to know exactly what we should, need to do to protect the property. That's why I think it needs more study before we do language. And that's why the number one item on the, in my motion for the committee to investigate is whether the current park regulations actually, you know, verify that that actually does address all the issues raised about the activities in the park. Because I think that is the most important thing, is to make sure that if our current regulations address those, we can, if we can get Lieutenant Glover and, and Sheriff's Department to enforce that, and it can address those, that gives us a breathing room to do our proper homework and research to make sure that the rest of the regulations around that park are done right.
So you made reference to village parks. Do you want to amend your motion that it's going to specifically address?
Well, I, I, we can, I can add it, say, also known as Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, because it's been historically known as Village Park, and more recently had the designation Ortonville Wildlife Preservation.
Because that's what's in our master plan, and that's why I'm, I'm just, was suggesting if you wanted to
We can, we can update that to say Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, that's fine.
I'm, I'm, just so that there's, that's all.
Consistency.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else? Comments?
I agree strongly.
So, so what, what's the plan for this committee? You know, I mean, to, to, to handle each one of these enumerations here, and then report back to council on a, on a monthly basis?
Well, I didn't quite a specific
Just like a regular subcommittee would be?
Timeline or committee membership? I thought that that would be something more appropriate, that we could discuss as a whole council, decide what timeline we would want to get them a report back, and what the makeup of that committee should be. I just feel that it's important that we have a committee investigate these topics, so we have all the information in front of us.
I don't think the proposal tonight should circumvent the ordinance that we have pending, which we have had legal draft up for us for our approval. Certainly, it was not in our packet tonight. I was expecting it to be in our packet tonight, and I'm not sure why it was in, in our packet tonight. But this should not, your proposal tonight should not circumvent that ordinance that we've already put forth to protect the property and the use of it up until such other time council approves to go otherwise in other directions.
Well, my motion is to postpone action on the ordinance until we get a committee report, because we may decide that there's a need to change some of the language within the proposed ordinance in order to be more complete and thorough in, in dealing with the park.
So Dan, your ordinance was not in our packet, nor was your resolution, so you can't use that argument with Larry. Something brought forward in front of us is a discussion item to sit there and review, and these are two separate things. A motion's made. Now, the motion is not to circumvent, the motion is to ensure that we've done this properly.
But wasn't that unfinished business though for the ordinance, though?
Pardon?
That was unfinished business, though, for the ordinance.
Correct. And so a motion is made, that the ordinance is postponed until done correctly, that this is not ready yet, is according to, am I interpreting wrong?
I'm not saying that the ordinance that we have is done correctly or incorrectly or not. I'm just saying, we don't have enough research and facts and reference material to know whether it's done right. And that's why I want to have a committee look into the topics related to it, get, report back to us, so we can validate, is the proposed language in that, from the attorneys, is that adequate? Do we need to change it? Do we need to add to it? Modify it? That's all I'm looking for, is, is time to do some homework, get the proper reference data and facts around that park, around the wildlife and habitat. We don't even know really what's in there. I don't think any of us is a biologist, or a botanist, or a wildlife expert, so I don't know what's appropriate to put in the language to protect that, that habitat.
I find the timing of this very, the eleventh hour at a meeting, no advance notice, I find that interesting. I, I find it interesting in that you have, Larry, have mentioned that we have to communicate and be more communicative, and here you pull something, this is almost a stunt. Almost a stunt. We already have something that's been going on for months to clean up an ordinance, especially designed for that park. To make an assumption that nobody really knows what's in that area, I think you're treating us like children. We, we kind of know there's deer that are back there. We see them. I don't have to, you know, chase them and tackle them, but I know there's deer and there's other wildlife. I also know that walking it, there's a lot of swamps and other things. We're trying to do something kind of transparent, and something like this is not.
Well, just to address that real quick, Mark, the only reason I did not share this with anybody on the council prior to it is because I did, I wanted to make sure that there was no appearance of collusion or deliberation, or anything like that on the topic, or any potential violation of Open Meetings Act, because if we're discussing a topic like this outside of council meeting, it really could be inappropriate in, in light of the Open Meeting Act. And I, and I, as I said, I wanted to make sure that I did not have anything improper.
This was, in my opinion, doing this is improper, because that does limit transparency. We all have had an opportunity to at least read something like this, digest, digest it as a council.
Did I, did I see, did I see trustee Ashman's proposal on, on, on the ordinance beforehand? He read it during the meeting? No, no, we didn't get Mark, I didn't see anything beforehand on that.
That's true, at the last meeting, Dan made two changes that none of us saw in advance.
I had no notice of it.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I know Liz was interrupted, she was
Um, no, all I wanted to, was to point out that if you do create a committee, there has to be a specific committee with a specific deadline.
Right, subcommittee. Thank you. I know, I also had a chance to review the ordinance and gather up some information. Last Friday, I spent some time with multiple, people from multiple entities, literally over one hundred years of combined experience and education. DNR, Genesee County, Oakland County, National Park, all of them employees. And I've had a chance to review that. A big concern for me is the wildlife preservation designation. For a wildlife preservation designation, we have not met any of the requirements at all. We don't have the information needed, which would be our forest management plan. That's a first step. We also don't have a forestry commission. That's another step. It takes multiple decades to be designated as a wildlife preservation area. And our consultation with the DNR is required, and agencies must come out, wildlife management areas, scientists, agency leaders, and university researchers and professors are designated to work with us to create that designation. So, is our park in compliance according to the professionals? No. We have not done the items determined to make this an existing village park, I'm sorry, preservation park. So we have not had any consultation to this point. So if this is something that we'd like to continue to do, we again, have to step back, we have to stop, we have to take the, the correct steps in order to do that. Our forest management plan has been in our recreation, I mean, I'm sorry, our regular master plan, I believe for over ten years. We still have not followed through on that. Had we have done that, we might be prepared at this point for something that the goal might be. We also do not have a forestry commission. I don't want to overstep your motion, and I'm not, but that's something we also need to consider if we would like to continue to do either one of these things. If we would like to continue with an ordinance to make it a preservation park, we still need to do these things. If we would like to develop it into, you know, paradise, we also need to look at this. So these are things to consider, and by my thoughts, Larry, I'm seeing those things fit into what you're talking about. They may not have been the same items, but I do see that those would cover my concerns, that I have. In talking with the people that know what they're doing, again, I, literally over one hundred years of experience in employment, we're not there yet. We're, we're working with things that we just don't know, and that's making me very uncomfortable. That's not something that we have the ability to, nor the knowledge. And, and I know I've said that every time. We have to have our facts straight before we go creating things that aren't there. And that's my opinion.
Thanks, Karen.
Anybody else?
Do you have other, do you have information to distribute to us?
I did, I gave it to you, yes.
Oh, this is all, everything that you said, that's right.
Again, you can go on the DNR site, you can look up those things in order to create a preservation. You're more than welcome to research. The problem is, we are not coming through with our research to say, this is why I would like to see it this way. And I'm saying, Dan, we, we go on assumptions, and so we have to make sure we have it all in front of us to say, how can I create this? Let's work on that. You know, versus, like I said, just coming up with it. It's, I believe there's five, and Lois, I don't mean to put you on the spot, is there five wildlife refuges? Is that a right number? Five designated, is that correct or no? It's five. So there's five, five designated national refuges in the United States. I, I don't see this as comparable to some of these designations, and I don't want, you know, us to step ahead. I would love to see us to review, and if it is, how can we make it that way? I, I would like to see, you know, us get into that, to protect that. So that's where I stand. Any other questions or comments? We do have a motion on the table? Anything else?
For what, Larry's?
We vote on that? Larry has a motion on the table, supported by Pat George.
Right.
But I want to make sure we have discussion questions, anybody else? All right. So, we have a motion on the table, and that is, as is correctly the highlighted, the bold?
Well, we can change Village Park to
Okay, well, I want you to say what your motion is, so we know what we're voting on.
Okay.
It doesn't say Village Park in motion, at all?
It is
In the motion.
Oh, just the bold.
Is your motion, what you'd like?
Okay. Well, my motion, I did read the entire part, is that so, if the motion is just the top part in bold, then, okay. Motion to form a committee to investigate topics related to the proposed ordinance and postpone action on the proposed ordinance until the committee reports their findings.
All right. Motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman George. Can we have a vote, please? Sure. Ashman?
Nope.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Skorica?
No.
Bryce?
Yes.
And Batu?
No.
Motion is tied three, three.
Motion is tied three, three? All right. Thank you. All right.
So with that being said, since it failed?
Correct.
Yep, a motion that's tied is a fail.
Yep.
All right.
Unless, you know, unless you bring that up next, the next council meeting.
Right, with everybody here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I'll give everybody a chance to share more information if they'd like to. Item?
So
Oh, go ahead.
I guess it'll just be on, it's going to just say we can make a motion to, to put it on for next month.
Right.
Because if it's already going to be on there, then I guess it doesn't, I don't need to make a motion.
I made a motion postponed, since my motion failed, we're still on that topic.
Right, it's a fail, right. And, because I was going to
It's unfinished business.
I was going to do it before you did, and like, well, let's just, you had the motion on the table, we had a vote.
All right. Are we able to, I mean, I guess I can do that without, I mean, I guess I don't have to ask, because that's in our discussion, but I would like to entertain a motion to create the forestry commission, so we can begin our research, and we can begin our process, and we can get a forestry management in, plan in place.
Support.
So I make a motion to create a forestry commission for the village of Ortonville.
We just rejected it. Support.
All right. Motion on the table by President Bryce, supported by Councilman George. Any questions or discussions?
I have a question.
Isn't that, how is that different than the one that we just did?
Well, if you look at the piece of paper that you have, a forestry commission is, our municipality is devoted to forestry and developing any labor on that land, and others that may be necessary to care for it. The maintenance of the land in a forested, produce, I'm sorry, producing area. It makes reasonable rules and regulations that concerns this land, and how the money would be appropriated for this purpose. So this is to protect the land, and to work with the land, assess the forestry management plan, to create, rather we choose to leave it as is, or to develop it. This is in place.
The forestry commission become a permanent entity to a temporary committee then?
And that is a DNR Environmental Protection Act recommendation. Yeah. Any questions or comments on that?
No, it didn't.
All right.
Didn't answer my question, okay.
Motion by President Bryce, supported by Councilman George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Right. Was it two no's? Three.
I would say three, yeah.
So you have another tied. It is. The motion failed.
Yep. So that one was So, that one was, that one was not on the agenda. You were just piggybacking that off of Jay then, right?
It was continued with the.
You're piggybacking it off of Jay.
It is continued with the Wildlife Preservation Park ordinance, yes. In order to proceed with the ordinance, to do it correctly, yes. All right. Item 13 will be the village manager's report.
Before we go on to 13, I've made, council heard tonight that there are illegal tree stands, whether they be ground or, or tree stands in that park. And I'd like to give permission to either Lieutenant Glover or one of council to go back and remove those and bring those stands to the village and have whoever owns them come and collect them at their leisure.
And what Lieutenant Glover said is that would be DPW, or he could contact somebody from DNR, and that was what was requested of us. So, I would like to request, or talk to Dale to see if he would like the DPW to go out, and if not, then he can contact Glover, and he can.
But I would suggest it's not at their leisure, I would give them a deadline.
This needs to happen right away. The hunting season's still active all the way up through, including probably part of January, so these, these stands should be removed immediately.
Well, I think, I think we need to also make sure that they take care, because I remember when we did our walking survey of the park, we did discover there was one semi-permanent line stand structure, but I think that when we were looking at the markers, it was determined that that was actually on private property, not on the village park. So, we need to make sure that when they're looking at these, they are, they verify that they are, whether or not they're on the village park property, or Artinville Wildlife Preservation Park property, correction there?
Sure.
Or whether they are on private property.
So, we will have Dale.
Private residential property?
Yes, because I remember when we were walking it, there were some cases where it was not easy to tell what part was the park and what part was the residence, the back of the residence' private property. So, we need to make sure that we don't remove something that's on private property.
And so, our manager will handle that with DPW. All right.
Oh, we have a motion by Ashman? Do we have support, or is that a failed motion?
It wasn't.
I think that was just a direction by the council.
It was just to ensure that it's followed up.
Yeah.
Going out and removing the lines is not something we will do. My recommendation to you is you do it immediately, and you have Bob Hoxwell go out and get them, or his crew.
Yeah, I think that's what we were just.
Because the DNR will come out at their leisure, they're busy right now with hunting season being upon us.
Second line.
I would have Hoxwell's crew go out and remove them.
Yeah.
And if they do that, please have them wear hunter orange, please.
DPW orange.
That's fine.
Oh.
Oh, safety vest orange.
All right. Item 13 will be the village manager's report, including the DPW report. I know Dan had a chance to touch on some of those items already.
I'm, I'm good.
And everybody's received their DPW report. If there's any questions with it, please contact the office and let them know.
I did have one quick question about that salter. Is that the salter that we just purchased that was?
That's my, how about warranty?
I'm not sure about the warranty, and I would have to talk to Bob about that, but they spent several hours trying to get that fixed. And part of it, I think, was a sheared bolt, which I don't know.
I thought that was on a snow blower, so it was a sheared bolt.
It was electrical. Was it electrical?
Yeah. So, I, I would have to get more information from Bob on that one, but it was brand new.
Yeah, before we invested spending hours on it, it's like, rather than.
And it is.
He's got it, he's got it all fixed.
We definitely should check into warranties if it was brand new.
Well, right, he shouldn't have spent, yeah, he shouldn't have spent that time doing it. And then on the Christmas store, I see the drop off office is Old Town Hall. Has that in the past been a drop off, or is that a new one?
It has not, no. I, I just thought, you know what, let's get the word out there.
Because that's, I mean, there's, yeah, because there's no oversight there for people to be dropping off. I, I mean, I would suggest not to have it there, because there's no oversight to make sure that things are walking in and not walking out.
Okay.
And then if the hall is rented.
We do check it every day, but.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's my suggestion, I think, you know, between the fire station, the township offices, and the village office, just because of lack of oversight there, I would suggest that we strike that.
Okay. And, and we have received four or five gifts in the office, which is.
Okay. All right. That's my comment there. And then, oh, I guess we'll do it when we do our committee updates.
So, item 14 will be our public comments, and those will be on non-agenda items only, please. So, if you have anything that you'd love to come and share with us, and anything that is not on the agenda, we'd love to hear from you. All right. Then item 15 will be our items from our trustees, and we'll start down with Colleen.
President?
Oh, yes.
I could interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped to you with the.
No, that's okay. I did pass out a memo. The biggest thing on there, I want to confirm, the ZBA meeting. I've got four people who said yes for the 16th, but I, you know, have heard from other trustees that they prefer not to have ZBA on the same night as a council meeting, so.
They tend to get quite lengthy when they're combined like that.
Sure.
So, were you, did you receive an optional date that worked for those that were not wanting to do the 16th?
Um, I have. I have one person who said anything but Christmas Eve.
You're so flexible, Mark.
I haven't missed one yet.
So, Christmas Day is okay?
I haven't missed one yet.
I'm just wondering.
But I, I guess what I'm asking is, if we don't want to do the 16th, I do need to put it in the newspaper, so I guess I'm looking for a date.
Can we schedule that particular, if we're going to have it on the same night, maybe we can lighten the load of our regular meeting?
I like that.
We just moved everything to December.
We just did.
Or that.
You won't be able to have a dispersments report, because that's the same day that I cut it off, so.
Well, that's, that's easy, that's just a.
We, we could have a, we can change the, have a hard stop at nine o'clock, let's not, get as much done as we can.
And I don't expect a heavy agenda for December either, but.
Well, and ZBA is, is returning, so it shouldn't be.
We've got one new, one returning.
Oh, we've got the two, you're right.
Oh, there's two.
I think it was good in front of planning.
There's two items on ZBA.
You're right.
I missed that it was two. I thought it was the same guy.
I'd rather do two short ones.
We could time limit the ZBA too, so, without her going crazy.
Well, we need a consensus. Would we like to separate it, or would we like to put out? I, I don't like smashing things in and not spending the time we need on them, but if we feel we could efficiently do it, that's great.
And we don't, you know, we could do it after the 16th, but the 16th is the first date we can do it, if I publish it in the newspaper.
What about Tuesday, the 17th? Council meeting, and then ZBA the following day.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm okay with that.
I'd rather have it in one night and be done. But that's fine. If we would love to be here two nights in a row, that's very.
For people early, that's a long day.
I know, but you must have that.
But I'd do it Monday.
That's fine, you guys decide.
I think 17th is good.
16th and 17th.
Yeah.
Any current concerns with that date?
To publish in the paper tomorrow, that's all I'm saying.
It's fine. At seven?
So, ZBA is.
Or six.
Seven would be great.
Six to seven.
Seven would be great.
Six to seven.
Seven would be great, if it's the 17th.
The 17th.
Okay. Seven, please.
Okay. Six to seven on the 17th?
And then normal on the 16th?
Yeah, it's a regular meeting.
Yeah, a regular council meeting on the 16th.
Okay, so 17th, and then the 16th is seven.
All right. So, now, items from trustees. Colleen?
The rules of procedure, I believe this is the copy because we amended last month with the agenda, but I would suggest that we, on each page, I believe you, because in your header, in your header, you have amended on each page, you just need to amend the page, the section that we amended, not every page, because we didn't amend every page, every section.
Okay. That, that's a header? I can change it?
Yeah, yeah, I would just suggest that.
Or down at the footer, put it down at the footer, something amended or something.
It's just, it's just editorial, just to change it so that, because we only changed that one section, that one page. Yep. And then.
Is that the consensus, consensus of council?
It doesn't make a difference to me, it is amended, so therefore, if it's on every page, that's, that's correct, it's amended.
I mean, it's the amended version of the, the rule, so I mean, I can see.
But then we know what we amended. Unless you're going to make a, maybe a little footnote on that page, just to show that's what was the change was.
Do we have any revision section within this document?
No.
That's typically how most.
Where it's like you can show the last page, and you can see where you can follow along.
We could do that, the last page.
Before, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do a revisions page would be nice for future. What do you think?
Makes sense.
At the very end, so we know what we're revising, and when, the date?
That's fine.
So, we can refer back.
Okay.
That would be nice.
Okay, so, if you please then put on the website too, about the lubinaries, and then get the volunteers. I just want to thank everybody for coming out for Halloween, even though it was a miserable Halloween, with the rain and the cold, but we still had people come out and get the, the donuts and cider, so it was very nice. I just want to, for, for council's information, that we're still, I still am receiving emails regarding the abuse of the, the dog feces in, in the preservation park, and the dogs off-leash. So, I know that they were sent a letter from the manager, and we're still having them going in, and the dogs are dumping there. There's a couple other things I follow up with Dale, with Dale on. And I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and spend time with your families, and drive
I have no further updates than what we already know for, for Rose, so I'm good.
I just did want to make a note that I know we've been working hard to enforce the dumpster enclosure, but I did notice, I believe it's 113 Narren Street, the Frontier business there, there's an unenclosed dumpster in the back end of their lot, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention, have that checked, and see if that needs to have a notice sent out about it.
Is that on the ordinance list? The ordinance violates?
I did not see it on the list. It's a narrow, you have to look for it, it's kind of narrow, but since the ordinance is out there.
113 Narren. It's, it's right next to Blackhawk Auto. I, I come home, and I fork off there every day, and I noticed that the other day, I was like, hey, they got an enclosed dumpster back there, and so I thought I would just mention that and see if.
It is unclosed, you're right, Larry.
And the one dumpster that we had on South Street, I noted on my memo, we did receive the penalty as directed by the court. They have pulled their permit to enclose dumpster, so I'll keep you posted. It's supposed to be done by December 30th.
And then one other item is, as Conny mentioned, our rules of procedure, I would just like to, I, I know we, we get a big packet, it's really tough to look through everything and know all the questions we're going to have necessarily upfront, and have a chance to discuss that in time, but it, it does say in our rules of procedure under section B, number four, item distribution, as a professional courtesy to staff, council members shall make every effort to indicate to staff, if technical questions are going to be asked, council members shall review the council meeting packet of information prior to the meeting. So, I think that that would be something, if we have questions on things like dispersment, something like that, if we can get those addressed prior to the meeting, and to our satisfaction, that might save some time at our meetings and stuff. So, if we can all try to be better at doing that, that might help make our meetings go
I'm good. All, all good here, thanks.
All right. I would like to thank the DPW again, over and over and over, for handling the snowstorm as well as they could. Many, many, many hours, rescinded vacation days, broken equipment, and they did awesome. We had safe streets, and we had sidewalks as best as we could, and I definitely thank the public for acknowledging that. I think it was a very frustrating week for those guys, and, and I think that whenever you see them, give them love, because they're awesome. Again with Colleen, happy Thanksgiving to everybody too, and so, I think that's it.
If I could point your attention to the press release that I typed up regarding just that subject. I have planned on posting this on the website and Facebook. Would you guys be okay if I put something in the newspaper? Just to, we did have a lot of people in the last couple of weeks call regarding snow removal and ice removal, and I'd just like to educate our residents on what they can expect.
I, I would have, I think that's a good idea, actually.
The only thing is, it's like now, it's been, you know.
There's a lot of new.
A couple of weeks that have went by now, I mean, it's unfortunate we couldn't have got it out as soon as it happened, so it'd be more timely. But, I mean, I don't know, do we want to?
But we have a long winter ahead.
Yeah.
It's the only thing I'm thinking.
It's still November, yeah.
And we can kind of do like an educational thing, maybe like we do with Septic Smart,